Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome to our Monday, July 14th School Board meeting. We will start with our agenda. Approval, deletions, additions. Dr. Baraco.
Thank you, Mrs. Seuss. We do have one amendment to the agenda tonight, and that is that we added the recognition for boys and girls track athletes under Roman numeral seven, A1. Everything else is as you received last week in your packets.
Motion by Dr. Malco, and I will second that. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there any correspondence this evening, Ms. Kelly?
There is not, Mrs. Seuss. Thank you.
We'll start with our Liaison Committee updates. Dr. Malco.
Hi, good evening, and I just came from an Education Foundation meeting, and we're very excited to let you know, as a reminder, pickleball tournament for education is coming up this Saturday, eight to one, at the pickleball courts in the gates of St. John. I see some pickleball players out there, right? We have all different levels, advanced, novices. Our first time organizing this event, and our goal is to raise $10,000, and we're not too far away. Remember, those funds go to provide grants for innovative instruction in our classrooms at Lake Central. There are a few spots available, but they're going fast. Moving on to the Lake Central Education Foundation grants, those applications are forthcoming in August, and they will be due back on September 29th. That's all I have from Education Foundation. Would you like me to go ahead, Mrs. Seuss?
Of course.
For Legislative, I have nothing to report, and for Dyer Parks, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Talon.
The Dyer Redevelopment Committee meeting is coming up, so I have nothing to report there, and then the Wellness Committee will be functioning in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly.
Yes, both of my groups met last week. I don't really have anything new to say, other than the Shoreville Parks Department has a lot of great events and classes for our kids, so check out their website or their Facebook page. Thank you.
And for my committee's dollars for scholars, checks went out Friday and today to all the colleges, so please give those colleges two, three weeks to hit your accounts, and then give us a holler if you don't see that scholarship in your accounts. So with that, we'll go to our official School Board business topics, consent agenda. Dr. Baraco.
Thank you again, Mrs. Seuss. Seek Board approval for the minutes from our executive session on June 16th, our regular board meeting on June 16th, our executive session from June 27th, and our special board meeting from June 30th. Additionally, seek Board approval for the claims, payroll, and extracurricular expenditures that you received in your packets last Thursday.
Motion for approval?
Motion from Dr. Malco?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Talon. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No, I was not here. That's why I did not.
All right. We'll move, we have no public comments, so we'll move into our official School Board business topics, regular agenda. Dr. Baraco.
And to kick that off, we are happy to recognize some athletes from boys and girls track and field, and we'll start that with introducing Mr. Anyer Athletic Director.
All right, before we start that, we do want to congratulate Josh Flores. He was, he's one of our baseball players, and he was drafted today in the fourth round by the Milwaukee Brewers. So, congratulations to him. Third year in a row, we've had a player drafted, and they've all been drafted by the Brewers, so we're kind of like their own mini-farm system, I guess. We are waiting for one boys' track and field kid to arrive, so we're going to start with the girls. At this time, I'm going to have Coach Weber join us to talk about the girls, his assistants, Rachel Kajawa, Jeremy Rainwater, and Doug Burns were not able to be here this evening, so they just wanted to say congratulations to all the team, and they're looking forward to another great year next year for everybody that returns. So, Coach Weber.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate it, the recognition. The girls did a wonderful job. Make me look good. Our freshman 3200 qualifier also medaled on our four-by-eight and school record four-by-eight, Lana Burgerman. Freshman here. She's a freshman. Yeah, well, she'll be a sophomore, but yeah. Junior, who's been on our top four-by-eight that went downstate three years in a row, and again, medaled and school record Bryn Hayes. Amelia's not here, but senior graduated. She'll be running in college, I believe, South Dakota State, who qualified in the 100-meter hurdles. Sophomore who last year qualified for state four-by-eight and the 1600, and then this year ran on our, I'm sorry, qualified in the 1600, this year ran on our medal four-by-eight, Chloe Neal, sophomore. Two-time state qualifier, and actually, she was undefeated through regionals this season, Delaney Oberholzer, in the discus.
In what field was she in?
Discus.
Discus?
Yes, sorry. Another senior hurdler, 300 hurdles, she's not here, but Sophia Palmer, who'll also be running in college. Another throw, our discus throwers, they're, most of their competition was against each other because they were constantly going one and two, one and two, one and two throughout the whole season. Emma Reyes placing ninth in the discus. And a sophomore runner who'll be clinking up here with her jewelry, seventh in the 800, sixth in the 1600, and on our four-by-eight team, Macy Thompson.
Mr. Anyer, is there any way we can have more home girls track meets?
That's decided by schedule. You only get a couple a year.
Yeah, it's hard to get to those. But girls, you're fun to watch when I'm here, when I'm there, but they are.
And then our, our next program's going to be our boys' track team, and Coach Alex Thompson, and Coach Scrupa's with him as well today.
Ours will be quicker than Coach Weber's. So, I want to echo Coach again. Thank you guys for having us. Both of these individuals, well, all the individuals that are on our track team that consists of 124 athletes work very hard throughout the season. It's extremely difficult to get to the state meet, especially in track, so I believe that the athletes here, girls, boys too, you guys did a great job representing Lake Central, what it means to be an athlete at Lake Central, a runner at Lake Central, so proud of both groups. I'm going to highlight my two boys here. The first one is going to be Mr. Aaron O'Neill, who qualified for state in the 300-meter intermediate hurdles, finishing number two all-time right now. Well, not finishing, because he's only a junior. He's going to be a senior. He's number two all-time in Lake Central history, running 38.8 for 300 meters, which is a fast time for those of us who don't know how 300 meters works. Attaboy. Aaron is also extremely spoiled because he gets to be coached by Coach Rudy Scrupa, who is an absolute legend when it comes to coaching track and field athletes here at Lake Central. The proof is in the pudding, so. And then, next is going to be Mr. Ben Prashan, qualifying for state in the 3200-meter run, so a couple more laps than Aaron. He is also number two all-time currently at Lake Central in the 3200-meter run, running 921 this year, so congratulations, Ben. Hopefully, we're going to be investing a lot of money in record stickers next year. All right, thank you.
They're all duels and tries. There's only, there's only five, there's only five meets.
Like the smaller schools, when they're not going to make it to state, they have a lot more dual meets with small schools around. They've kind of cut that out.
Can the parents and friends and other relatives of these outstanding athletes please stand to be recognized? Thank you for putting in your time. We're going to continue with our meetings. You're certainly welcome to stay, but if you have other things there, more pressing, you can go.
Okay, thank you all. Moving on, my second item is just to seek Board approval for three board members and myself to attend the ISBA/IPSS annual meeting this afternoon. I did receive information that Dr. Malco will also be attending, but we were unable to get that worksheet completed for tonight, so we'll bring that back at the next meeting. But seek Board approval for all of us to attend the annual meeting in Indianapolis, September 13th, 14th through 16th.
Motion to approve?
Motion for Ms. Kelly. I will second that. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. And on to our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Castaneda.
Thank you. For my first item, I am seeking the Board's approval for the personnel recommendations.
Move for approval?
We have a motion from Dr. Malco?
I'll second that.
Second that from Ms. Talon. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. For my second item, I am seeking the Board's approval for the updated transportation manual for 25-26. It was mostly just putting some more explicit language in there for the practices that they currently use, but we've been fortunate to have some new bus driver trainees, and so we just wanted to make sure that that language was in there.
Motion to approve the new transportation manual?
Motion for Ms. Kelly.
I will approve that.
Second from Ms. Talon. Excuse me, any discussion?
No, but I must say, I hear a lot about our bus drivers, and it's always good stuff. And I think that you should know that. Knowing that Joe Crusien is one of our trainers, is just a wonderful foundation, and then Mr. Midget, I know, has joined the ranks, and he's another wonderful foundation for our kids because they're male, and it's a good experience. So, kudos to the Transportation Department for what they're doing.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next item I'm seeking the Board's approval for is the new Certified Staff Handbook. We previously had the Terms of Employment, but attending some HR and other legal seminars, they had recommended having a bit more thorough of a certified handbook that spelled out some of the more common board policies and practices for our staff. And so, we've been working all year, actually, in partnership with LCTA, and they've been wonderful because it's been a process, but we finally got it put together. So, I'm asking the Board's approval for the new Certified Staff Handbook.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Talon, and I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. For my next item, I am seeking the Board's approval for the Student Code of Conduct. Very minimal change here. We just updated it under the expulsion section to reflect that the School Board will no longer hear appeals for expulsions. This was a change that we had also made to our board policy.
Move for approval?
Motion from Dr. Malco?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Kelly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I had a quick question, and I'm not sure, Dr. Bracy, if you can answer this or not, but I noticed that the excused absences include parent notes and doctor's notes.
Correct.
And in the past, that was divided out, but now it's all in one group.
No, they're, they're actually separate. So, excused are the ones that have a doctor's note, and then parent guardian verified are for the notes that are coming from parents.
Okay, on the paper that I have that you handed out, it read differently. It wasn't in this.
Now, Dr. Malco, I have seen a document floating around on social media that is incorrect, so I don't know if you've seen that one, but the one that Mrs. Castaneda has is correct.
I'll show you the one that I have. It was from the ISBA, or it was one of the Indiana codes. No, I'm more happy with this.
So, the, the state did release more guidance on how we classify our attendance codes, and so we met with our administrative team over the summer, although they made suggestions, and for the most part, we stuck with it, they gave schools the ability to make some decisions about how we classify them as well. However, we did talk with a lot of our neighboring school districts, because we know this is a change for parents, because the state is trying to improve the chronic absenteeism rates across the state, and we're pretty on point with Hanover, Dunland, Munster, and several of the surrounding districts. So, I'm happy to look at what you have.
Yeah, it, it was given to us, and I do believe it was a, I thought it was in the Indiana code, but maybe I misread it. Can you explain to me on the data board how they come up with that percentage of like 64.7%?
So, they look at the percentage of students you have that did not exceed the number of absences for chronic absenteeism.
Did not exceed, and then they divide that by?
They're just looking at the percentage of your population who did not exceed chronic absenteeism.
Okay, very different approach.
It is, and we appreciate the fact that they're trying to encourage our families to make sure that they're here, because if they miss a day, they miss a lot. But some of those numbers can be a little hard for schools, because sometimes we don't have a lot of control over the decisions that our families are making to maybe take vacations and other things like that.
Right, right, right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The next item is the Elementary Student Handbook. Minimal changes here, except for that new attendance policy. So, there's consistent language now in all three handbooks regarding the attendance policy, as well as the new infographic, which we're going to send out to our families. Per a new state law, schools must meet with parents after five unexcused absences, and then we have to report chronically absent students, which is defined by the state as either 10 unexcused absences or 18 total absences of any kind to juvenile authorities. So, once we get these handbooks approved, though this is something that the parents sign off on during online registration, is having received, we are going to push out more information, because we want them to be well-informed about this change.
And you said you report it to whom?
Juvenile authorities, so either DCS or Juvenile Justice Services.
And do you think they will respond?
They have actually tasked individuals in every county with that, so we are hoping to see some support with some wraparound services or other interventions from those organizations.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome. So, seek Board's approval for the Elementary Handbook.
So approved. I mean, so moved. Excuse me.
We have a motion from Ms. Talon. I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. For my next item, I am seeking the Board's approval for the Middle School Handbook. This had a few more changes, though a lot of them were technical corrections about making sure students knew that school attendance was required prior to a Saturday extracurricular event, cleaning up some spots where we still had laptops instead of Chromebooks, and then, of course, that attendance language as well. So, I seek the Board's approval for the new Middle School Handbook.
Motion to approve?
Motion from Ms. Kelly.
Second.
Second from Dr. Malco. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And then for my last item, I seek the Board's approval for the new High School Student Handbook. We did do an update to the academic dishonesty policy. It used to say that students will receive a zero on an assignment where they were caught cheating, and that included the student who was copying the work, as well as the student who shared it. We're finding some situations where students are sharing work simply to maybe show other student or friend the format, and then it's being taken without their consent, and so we wanted to make sure that the administration has the ability to make the final determination on how that's going to be handled, and it wasn't quite so black and white, because there's a lot of shades of gray in a school setting. So, that was one big change. We do want all students at the high school now to have the school-issued Chromebooks, because their personal devices do not work so well with some of our programs. For dance eligibility, they did add that students cannot have more than four days of unexcused absences per semester in order to attend a school dance. This is in line, then, with what the state is asking us to do in terms of trying to keep those kids under 10 absences total for the year, and that's just the unexcused absences. They had some other technical corrections in there. The attendance language was put in, and then I think that was all that was pretty significant in there. Any questions?
Correct. With the Chromebooks, then, but the, that still will be Lake Central.
Correct. We want them using our device because then it runs through our filter. We can control more of what's coming out of those devices and things like that.
And was there any comment anywhere about AI and the use of that? Because I have a lot of parents questioning me about that.
So we are actually going to bring to the board in August the AI policy for the high school. It's not in the handbook. It's something they're going to have them sign off on separately in Language Arts class along with our plagiarism policy. And so there will be a representative from the high school probably at the next board meeting to go through that with you.
That's very great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, then I seek the board's approval.
So moved.
Motion from Dr. Malco?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Kelly. We already had discussions, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Castaneda. Thank you for all that time and effort you put into organizing and preparing these manuals and handbooks. Your attention to detail and dedication is definitely not unnoticed, so thank you. All right, I know our Director of Primary Education, Dr. Bracy, has nothing for us, but thank you for coming tonight. So who is Director of Secondary?
I am, Mrs. Shuneman, tonight. Yes. So see, I do have something. For her first item, I am seeking approval for the professional leave request in your packets.
Motion to approve?
Motion from Ms. Kelly, and I will second that. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. And for her second item, I am seeking your approval for the field trip requesting your packets. So moved.
Motion from Ms. Talent?
Second.
Second from Dr. Malco. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our Director of Student Services, Mrs. Gramala.
Thank you. Tonight, I just wanted to update the board and our public, maybe those watching at home, about our transition to our new IEP and ILP program. So we were notified in the spring of 2024 that the IDOE would be changing our provider for our state-supported IEP and ILP program. So we were, they were discontinuing Indiana ILP and moving us to Power School Special Programs. So then in the fall of 2024, they gave us sort of the timeline for that. In April, training was made available to our teachers, our special education teachers. So the teachers and our staff members who are involved in creating IEPs were given access to two hours of training. Supposed to be two hours of training for some staff members. It took a little bit longer than that. The unfortunate part was that the training really didn't give us, I'm looking at Mrs. Rebe because she had the joy of experiencing it, did not give us much of a feel for what the actual program is going to look like. Our sense was that it wasn't very helpful. For administrators, we had a much longer training that was, gave us a lot of options for reporting. So we do think we're going to have some access to pull good data from the program when it's available. But again, we really don't have a feel yet for what the program's going to look like. So then they took down our, so that happened in April and May. Our teachers were able to complete the training during our early release days. They took down our old IEP/ILP program on June 6th. So we've not had access to any of our online IEPs since that date. That has created some hiccups for us over the summer. We had a parent, I had a parent reach out to me who was needing access to an IEP for a student who had been dismissed from services way back in elementary school. We've since, you know, destroyed paper copies of that, but, so we had no way of finding that. So that was a little bit of a problem. We are supposed to get access to the new program as of Friday. That's when it will open up for Ms. Scherzinger and the Tech Department to start giving teachers access. At that point, our special education staff will be able to start getting access. We have been told per IDOE that there will be help desk hours open and office hours for teachers and staff as they begin to use the program. We will have to work with our general education staff. None of our principals have been able to access the program yet, so we'll have to work with them. They do utilize the programs to be able to look up records on students. We'll have to work with them for training. Our general education teachers, we really, once we saw what the training looked like, it did not seem important for them to go through the type of training that was available at that time. So we will have to work with them to get them into the program and also get some basic training available to them to be able to access what they need to access. Parents are going to see both a different paper copy when we start holding conferences, so we'll have to walk through that with them so they understand what they're looking at. And then they will be able to access an online parent portal for signing off on documents and things like that, which will, again, look different than what it did before. So we, I wanted to talk about it in this meeting, just in case you, as board members, hear some complaints. We are anticipating potentially a little bit of a rocky start to the school year once conferences start. And then for any parents who might be watching the board meeting at home, we're just going to need some patience from everybody because it is going to be a learning curve for all of us when we start school. So I feel like it will be okay, but we're all just going to have to be patient.
Yeah, you'll make it work because you have to make it work.
We will, we always do. Yes, we always do. So hopefully, things will go well when it opens up on Friday, and we'll be able to get teachers, I've gotten emails from teachers already. They're chomping at the bit even though they are all at home. They are ready to get in and start working. So hopefully, things will, it will open on time on Friday, and we'll be able to get people in and be able to start working.
Yeah, I know a lot of schools in Illinois use Power School. Are there a lot of schools in Indiana that use Power School?
Right. And, but this is, it's designed by the company who does the student management system, but it's completely separate from that. It's just the same software company.
Oh, I see, I see. So there's really not going to be any type of repetitive, any kind of recent experience that we could follow on that?
No.
Okay. Because we have Canvas, right?
Well, Skyward is our student management system.
That's right. We looked at Power.
We did.
Power School, yeah.
Yeah. So I just wanted to share that with all of you.
Good luck. You have a good team.
Thank you. We do. We always do.
Thank you. And our Director of Business Services, Mr. James.
Thank you. Each year, our Food Service Department is required to complete what's called the Paid Lunch Equity calculation. And in order to receive federal dollars, they want to make sure that you're charging your full pay students for lunch and breakfast a high enough rate in order to offset the amounts of dollars we're getting for free and redo students. And so based on that calculation, it determines if we need to raise our food prices or not. Based on this year's calculation, we do not need to increase our prices for breakfast or lunch. So I seek your approval for the rates that were included in your board packet. These are the same rates as last year and actually is the same rates for 2324. We've been able to go two years without increasing that cost to our parents. So I seek your approval for those meal prices for 2526.
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Dr. Malco, and I will second that. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. My second item has to do with our food service bids. So back in 2019, we joined the Food to School Purchasing Cooperative with a lot of other school districts across the state. And then the cooperative goes out and does the bidding for grocery items, milk, and bread. Last year was when they formally went out and did all the bidding, and a year ago at this time, we approved those said contracts. How the co-op works is that those contracts are generally good for four years, and so instead of having to rebid it all the time, they can just re-up the contracts with those same contractors for an additional year. So that is what the co-op has chosen to do, and, but we are still required to approve those contracts here at the local level because those, we are paying those vendors directly. So I seek your approval to keep the contracts with HPS, GFS, and Commercial Food Systems for our grocery items, Pleasant Feud Dairy for our milk, and Alpha Bakery for our bread for the 2526 school year.
Motion to approve?
Motion from Ms. Kelly.
I second.
Second from Ms. Talent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And then my last item was to give the board our quarterly financial update. We are now in the middle of July, so we are closing out not only June, but our fiscal year of July of '24 through June of '25. So I left two legal-sized spreadsheets at your stations. The first one we're going to go over is, the deal in the top left-hand corner says fiscal year '25 cash flow for the education fund. So our education fund is where most of our funding from the state goes to. It is for classroom expenditures for not only our teachers, but our aides and classroom-related activities. So if you look at that, we started the fiscal year of July of '24. If you look in the top left-hand corner, of just over $10 million in the fund. And then if you shoot all the way down to the bottom right-hand corner, we ended the year with about $12.5 million in the fund. So about $2.3 million to the good. We'd like to be close to the margin on that because we push as many dollars as we can to the classroom. But as we know, we have some financial uncertainty not only coming our way, but all school districts as well. So, you know, this will help with that. Nothing really too of the ordinary this year. We had a good year. One of the things, I just want to point out to the, if you look in the top-left corner in blue, it's in small print, it says Education to Operations Transfer Percentage. And so Indiana Code doesn't, in the DOE, do not want you to transfer more than 15% of your education fund money into the operations fund. That's difficult for many school districts to do because they get hit by circuit breaker, and they don't get as much tax dollars in the operations fund. Here, we are currently running at just under 6% at 5.9, which is very low, and we're proud of that because it's keeping more dollars in the classroom and going into our teachers and our aides. So just wanted to point that out. Before I move on to the next sheet, does anybody have any questions about the education fund? Okay. So if you flip the page, in reality, we have our, in addition to the education fund, we have our referendum money from our taxpayers, and we also have our operations fund as well. And really, those three funds work together in many ways. And so really, to get a clearer snapshot of how the school district is operating, we add these three funds together and present it on another page. So again, looking here, if you look in the top-left, we started July of '24 with a little over $38 million between the two. And if we jump to the bottom-right-hand corner, we're at the end of the year with just under 44. So about 5.5 to the good. Again, ran well, but not sure what's going to happen here in the next few years. We have, we're very tightly watching our ADM and how that is going to change from last fall to this fall. We are getting move-ins and people registering throughout the summer here. We have rolled over our student management system, so that's since most of the kids who have withdrawn or moved have been removed from our numbers for the ones we know about. And then we're just waiting for hopefully more and more young kindergartners and other families to come and register. But we are watching that steadily, just to see, not only for staffing levels, but then how things will progress into the fall. One thing I will point out here, if you look at the very top in the middle in the blue, we have our cash balance goals. I've always felt that, you know, I want to have 20% on hand. You never know when a boiler's going to go, or roof leaks, things that are just kind of emergency situations. Recently, been hearing word from S&amp;P and the bonding agencies that they want to have more like a 30% balance on hand. I'm not as much of a big fan of that because we're not here to hoard money. We're here to put money into the classrooms and educate kids. But we are currently over 30%. But we'll see what happens over these next 12 months. We may, that might dip down a little bit. We do not anticipate doing a GO bond this year, but probably next year. And when we do, we'll go for a bond rating, and we'll see how S&amp;P feels at that time. And maybe some of our peers across the state will be getting some more feedback as well for when they go to do some debt and see what the bonding agencies are doing. I do not want us to get into a situation where they drop our rating. We've worked really hard to have a very high rating, and if that means a lower rating in turn means higher interest rates, which means then means more cost to our taxpayers, you know, we want to avoid that for sure. So, you know, we'll do what we have to do. So we're just kind of keeping a watchful eye on that as well. So does anybody have any questions on this?
So, Rob, what you're talking about is the standards and cores rating, and they want you to be at, us to be at 30%?
Now, I haven't heard that directly, but that is what some of our peers and what we're hearing across the state. We haven't gone for a bond rating since last spring. So I don't know if it's, I'm not going to deny it because I'm hearing it from people I trust. However, just trying to think, you know, if I'm a rating agency, you're looking at risk, and maybe some districts don't have as much cash on hand now. Maybe their revenues with declining enrollment are going to be a hindrance. You talk about tariffs and increased costs for non-payroll-related items. That could eat into cash balances. So they might be looking at wanting a higher cash balance for, because of so much unknowns coming up in the, maybe the next 12 to 15 months. I don't know because I haven't talked to them. This is my speculation. But yes, that's, once we go down that path of new debt, potentially next year, we will hear it directly.
And you feel pretty comfortable that you can accommodate that?
Well, we're there now. We're currently at 33%. So, you know, so I don't have to do much to get there.
Yeah.
You know, so I just want to maintain it, so.
That's good. And that brings me then to the next question. And how are we doing with staffing? And I know that kind of trickles over into you, I believe, but how's our staffing issue going?
It's going well. We filled almost all of our positions, save for a couple of recent special education postings that we've put up. We did do, make some adjustments with our staffing. It did not fill some positions due to the declining enrollment, and we were able to save 1.3 million. So I appreciate the principal's hard work with that and the staff as well, because some people were moved to other positions from their current one.
1.3 million?
Yes.
Wow. How many positions did we go down? Do you know how many that includes?
I'd have to look at my data sheet.
Okay, that's okay. All right. Have we decreased, have we decreased the number of parapodes that are going to be able to assist in classrooms? Is that something we're looking at, or?
We are watching that closely. Becky and I actually have a meeting this week to discuss that with the declining enrollment. We also probably will have some declines in the amount of services we need. However, remember, some of the things are written into IEPs, and so that takes time to go through those case conferences and make those adjustments, and students show progress.
Okay. Okay, well, good luck, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I don't think we have any public comments, so we'll move right into our board comments and consideration of future agenda items. Ms. Kelly, I'll start with you.
Just hope everybody, our students, our staff, and their families, everybody's having a great summer. Enjoy. I think we're like T-minus 30 days, right?
Could be.
Thanks.
Mrs. Talent?
I just want to say thank you to every one of the administrators that have helped give us a heads up as to the handbooks and, Ms. Gramala, everything that you've given, told us about today. Those things really do help. So thank you for that extra effort from everybody.
Thank you. Dr. Malco?
I have nothing special to say. Thank you very much.
Okay. And I just wanted to thank all the student athletes that came out tonight to be recognized. They, it was a pleasure to celebrate them. So with that, we'll turn it over to Dr. Veron. it over to Dr. Veraco for board calendar or future activities.
All right, so as we work our way into July, we start ramping up for the new school year, as was mentioned. We had our first informal negotiation meeting today, and we also met with our benefits committee, so we're already talking about those plans for the fall. And our next meeting will be here on August the 4th.
Thank you.
Dr. Veraco, what's the first student day?
Yes.
And teacher day is the 12th?
Right, and that calendar is on our website.
Thank you. Do we have motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second over there. Were adjourned.